I'd like to welcome everybody here. My name is Jim Colson and I'm the city manager here in the city of Topeka. And joining me at the table this morning, or this afternoon, evening, is Rich Eckert, who's the counselor for the county, and Doug Whitaker, who's the public works director for the city. There are a lot of people here today, and I'm very excited that we had this many people turn out. This is a, this is a very important issue for our community going forward, and we're going to hopefully get a lot of good conversation and help define how we proceed with this issue going forward. But before I get started any further, I'd like to recognize some of the elected officials that are here today. Mayor Larry Wolgast is, is here, and council member Nathan Schmidt, council member Elaine Schwartz. I, I don't see any other council members, so if you did sneak in. And from the county side, I'd certainly like to welcome, recognize Commissioner Shelley Buehler, and Bob Archer, and also Kevin Cook. And then just walking in is council member John Campos, who's joined us today. So, our objective today is fairly simple. We want to engage in a community discussion pertaining to the potential extension of the countywide half-cent sales tax. And to do that, at least from a starting perspective, we think it's important to talk about this from a historical perspective. How did this start? What did it look like? What did it result in? And more specifically, what got built out of this particular project? And then, we want to talk specifically about how the sales tax money got spent, and to cover that today is going to be Rich Eckert with the Shawnee County. And then, we're going to talk about the overview of potential future projects. And we want, we want to break it up into a couple of different slices. Number one is, we want to talk about it from a county perspective and from a city perspective, but we also want to talk about it from a quality of life perspective enhancement, and then an economic development perspective, and then also talk about streets. So, my role today is really going to serve as the emcee, and then when we get to the point of, of opening up the town hall for discussion and, and questions, then I'll just moderate that at this point. But to go ahead and get us started, I'd like to ask Rich Eckert to provide some information on the explanation and history of the countywide sales tax.
Good evening. My name is Rich Eckert, and I work for the county. I'm the attorney for Shawnee County, and I have met a good number of people in this room. I'm glad to see you here. The reason that I'm here tonight is that I lost, or won, depending on how you look at it, the game of last man standing. We did these negotiations for the current sales tax, starting as early as 2000. And as I look across the room, I think the only people that are here that had anything to do with that are Neil Dolber in the back of the room, and myself, and I don't know of anybody else that was really around even. So, I won that game. To talk about the sales tax, I do want to back up a little bit earlier than even this one, because I think it's instructive to how we should do this. A countywide sales tax is obviously different than a city's sales tax in that it's voted upon by every registered voter in the county of Shawnee, and is placed upon the ballot by the board of county commissioners. I want to go back to one that was attempted in November of 1988, and I note statistically, countywide sales taxes, since 88, we are four for five. And I think it's pretty easy to see why we are. The 88 sales tax was the, the idea of Commissioner Kingman at the time, and she wanted a county to enact a one-cent sales tax, and she wanted the city to drop half-cent sales tax, half a cent of their sales tax. Then we would roll all of that money into property mill levy tax reduction, and it would have the effect of eliminating about 17 mills. Now, that lost, and it lost overwhelmingly, it lost 36,000 to 26,000, and I think that the reason that it lost was, while we said that out loud, there was no contract, there was no binding promise made, that we would in fact lower the mill levy. All it was, was actually a sales tax increase, but there was nothing that would affect the budgets of either the city or the county, nothing to bind them to this promise of the mill levy reduction. And the taxpayers saw that, and they voted accordingly. I would have voted no on that one too, quite frankly. Now, the next attempt at a sales tax for the county was in November of 1994, and this time, it was totally different. This time, there was a defined purpose, and that was to buy the old Montgomery Wards building and turn it into a law enforcement center. So, when that was placed upon the ballot, it was very clear to what the money was going to, towards the new LEC, and then the remaining $2.8 million was going to go to county roads and bridges. And that sales tax passed, and it passed rather easily. That was a four-year tax. Two years after that, we started negotiations for the sales tax that would happen after that four-year tax, and that was for the Oakland Expressway, and $4 million to the Kansas Avenue Bridge, to do a refresh to the city bridge. And again, this one was defined as exactly what we were going to do, do the projects, Oakland Expressway, Kansas Bridge, and again, it overwhelmingly passed. And one thing that I note was, is that in November of 94, the, if you can say leftover money, had the defined purpose of going to the county, and then in the next tax, the leftover money went to the city, each of us to work on our various bridge projects. So, now we come to the 2002 resolution, which, if you can go one more, this is what that looked like, and I don't think it's very clear, probably not clear at all, but what I can do is read to you what it's for. Shall the following be adopted? Shall a countywide retailer's sales tax in the amount of 1/4% be levied in Shawnee County, Kansas, to take effect January 1, 2003, and expire four years after its effective date to provide revenue to finance countywide infrastructure development and economic development? And I'm going to be honest with you, I can't believe that passed. That was due to the trust, I believe, that the public had placed in us after our last two public sales tax issues. This resolution didn't say anything about where the money was going. All it promised was infrastructure and economic development. And the problem with that, if you can now go to the first slide, is, since it wasn't defined in here, there was some squabbling between the city and the county about how the money was going to be split up. And it drew an editorial that I found in my files, where the Capital Journal took the county to the woodshed over this, which personally speaking, I thought that was unfair, but it happens, about what to do with the money. So, we learned a lesson in 2002, all of us, and 2004, we came back to the voters wanting to take the half-cent sales tax to a half-cent sales tax. And the reason was Topeka Boulevard Bridge, massive expenditure, massive bridge project that mill levy money can't handle. So, we all came back into the room and talked about maybe doing this differently. And now, I want to throw up the 2004 resolution, and this is the one that we're operating under today. And the 2004 resolution hearkened back to the 94 and 96 resolutions, and that we told the public exactly what we're going to do with the money. We listed seven infrastructure projects, and these are major projects. And, and I want to, I want to point out that on a countywide, on this countywide tax, we didn't do these with regards to county commission districts. We didn't do these with regards to city council districts. We did these according to big projects that affect major portions of the county, due to traffic counts, due to population, to future population shifts, and that's what we came up with. And again, the Topeka Boulevard Bridge, a huge project, and we got some rather timely help from the federal government on this project, was the, was the lead on this project. But all of these projects move massive amounts of traffic in our community. And one thing I, I am proud to say is that all of these are going to be done on time by 2016, and I think every one of them's going to be under budget. Not on budget, they're going to be under budget, because of the favorable economic situation for doing construction, construction projects. So, when you look at this 2004 ballot question, I think it's really, I think it's pretty, as a government geek, if you'll let me use that word, it's, it's artful. It tells you where the money is going to be used. It tells you the project that we're going to be using it on. And the public overwhelmingly voted in favor of this. I believe this one passed by 58% positive vote. And again, the number one issue on here, and these were not listed in terms of importance, it was just how we listed them, of course, was economic development. Again, that started in 2002, and it carried over into 2004. So, that's kind of where we got to on this, and here we are today. This 2004 tax is slated to end at the end of 2016. So, that's kind of where we're at. The next topic I'd like to just real quickly reference is, again, the difference between a city tax and a county tax in terms of sales taxes. When a city passes a sales tax, they get to keep all the money, right? They might have a general tax, they might have a special tax, they divide it in two different ways, but the city keeps all of that. When the county passes a sales tax, if we don't define what it is, if we don't fall into one of several exemptions, we split it. And we split it based upon where the mill levy properties are located, inside, outside city limits, and based upon population, inside, outside. And back in 2004, I believe the split was, the city got 54% of the money, and the county got 43% of the money, and yes, it doesn't add up to 100, because our four incorporated cities outside of the city of Topeka get the rest, Silver Lake, Rossville, Dover, Auburn. So, that's how you get to 100. So, what we did, knowing that back then, 54% doesn't do the Topeka Boulevard Bridge, if the city just had that, is that the city and county came together in agreement about how the money was going to be spent. We pooled both parts of our money, and we signed an agreement before this was ever put on the ballot, and that, that's the body known as JDO. JDO is actually a contract between the city and the county, about how we're going to use the revenue, the proceeds from this sales tax. We learned that in 2002, when we didn't have JDO, and we squabbled for two years over the money. There's been no squabbling over this money. I, I'm proud to say, as a staff member, not as elected official, how our elected officials have behaved on JDO, they've done an excellent job. JDO has been an excellent vehicle for doing these infrastructure projects, and we have a certain level of trust from the public, I believe, because of, because of these projects, and I think that we're going to use that to build upon in the future.
Thank you, Rich. I'd like at this point to ask Doug Whitaker, the public works director for the city, to walk through where the sales tax money has been spent up to this point, and then from there, we'll roll into an overview of potential future projects.
Okay. Thank you. As you said, my name is Doug Whitaker, and I've been here about five months, so I'm gaining an interest in understanding here in the city of Topeka. Let me just take you through the countywide half-cent sales tax by the numbers here. And to date, through September 30th, the city of Topeka has spent 40 million of the 333,000. The, let me have the other mic, I guess. And then, the county has spent 38 million.
Tax, tax, tax.
The county has spent 38,966,000, and then to economic development, there's been 42 million that has gone to that since the inception of this tax. The breakdown is for the city, is the Topeka Boulevard Bridge. To date, we have spent 22,645 on the bridge, and then for the infrastructure, meaning the street projects, is 17,674,251. For the breakdown for Shawnee County expenses, we've got bridge projects roughly around 13 and a half million, and that was multiple bridge projects, and then infrastructure projects was about 25,453 million that's been spent to date. If you go, the next is a map, and I think you've got to hand out the first map, you can see it. The primary projects for the city were, of course, the bridge, and then some road projects over here on the west side of town. The county did, there were about six projects, I think, on Wanamaker, a couple over here on 37th, and then we've got a couple here, and then one that they're doing, I think, this coming year is up here at 46th and Topeka Boulevard. So, these are the projects that were in this countywide sales tax. The next slide I'd like to go over is, there's also out there, so just to clear up on some confusion, is the citywide sales tax. And that's the second slide, and we kind of combine them, and these are projects that are going on within the city's sales tax. And just to clarify on that, on the city's sales tax, there were limitations. And those limitations were that they had to rebuild what was there. We couldn't enhance by adding curbs, gutters, sidewalks, additional lanes, or anything. It was strictly to repair the streets out there that were in bad shape. And to date, I think we've done, we've done 30 projects that are complete, and we've got eight that are in process right now. Basically, again, you can see them on the map in this area, and just to kind of show you that they are spread out through the city. The last item that I'd like to go over is, as far as potential, when I say 2014, this is just some potential projects that we would look at, that this is where we wanted to gain your input, that if the county tax was extended. And the primary areas that we looked at, just to make sure, from a staff recommendation, we broke them down into two areas, priority A, priority B, priority A being the primary ones, and I think we identified eight projects. And just to show you where we got the recommendation, it's based on the following criteria. We tried to concentrate on the core area arterial streets, those streets that are basically, we were trying to get in the core of the city that need, need work, or need to be enhanced from the standpoint of need additional lanes, curb gutters, et cetera. The other would be streets that are, that have projected capacity issues, that was done by a study, the planning completed, I think about two years ago, on areas of where roads that are projected to exceed their capacity, and we just wanted to enhance those. And then, thirdly, the other area that we looked at was streets that would add infill growth. In other words, to kind of help fill the city in within the basic boundaries of the city now, rather than expanding further out. So, again, these are projected projects, this is where we wanted to get input from you, and just because we, that has not been finalized on how long this tax would go on, obviously, we can't give you a specific number of projects, but we just want to open this up for discussion. So, with that, I'll give it back to Mr. Colson.
Thanks, Doug. What we'd like to do is, is draw a reference to, in your packet, there's a survey, it's an Evergreen Survey, right? There's a, there's a survey, it talks about the countywide sales tax survey, and it breaks it down into, into three questions. The, the first question is, if you had $100, how would you break that, how would you allocate that within, within the three categories totaling $100? And then, the second section asks you to list one through five, the highest priority, potential city road projects that could be funded, one being the highest. So, just kind of go through that and rank those. And then, the third area gets into the quality of life area, and just asks you to identify whether you think that those are projects that you would like to see funded and completed. Now, I want to make reference, we're, we're interested in the 2014 countywide sales tax, that's just a moment, we just put that on there. There is no determination at this point as to whether this is going to go forward, and when it's going to go forward. And we certainly can answer some of those types of questions as we go forward. But at this point, I'd really just like to open up the, the mic to anybody to make comments on their thoughts on this, if they have any questions. We don't want to get into a lot of detail about why and what happened in the past. We'll do our best to get into it, but we want this to really be an opportunity for us to gauge from this group of what's on your mind, what you'd like to see happen. As we go forward. But at this point, I'd like to open up the microphone, come up to the podium, and make your statement, ask any questions that you may have. Well, with that, let's go home. Are you, are you uncomfortable going to the?
Yeah.
I'm not happy to hand you this microphone, but I'm learning. You have to keep it.
I, first of all, streets and roads, quality of streets and roads are important. I'd like to have you speak to how you determine, evaluate whether there are projects, we just seem to redo, we dig it up and put in sewers. We dig it up and put in sewers again, and how are you evaluating, does a project really have what kind of life expectancy, and how do you measure that?
All right. We're having a little problems with this. Okay, so the question was, how do you, what criteria do you use to determine what would be the appropriate road projects going forward? And so, how do we evaluate this? How do we assess those? The first thing is, we ask you what you think, and what's important to you, and that factors into that. But we do have some more technical details. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Doug to talk about their process for, for making, how did those particular projects get onto this list?
Basically, for these projects, we sat down with the planning department, which is looking at the overall comprehensive plan for the city, looked, even talked with the neighborhood, you know, HND, Housing and Neighborhood Development, to get feedback from them for what subdivisions, what areas are key areas that they want to concentrate on. And then, we looked at it, you know, also from an engineering standpoint, of where we have, you know, capacity issues, street issues, et cetera, out there that could be causing, you know, problems, and then tried to look at the best way to incorporate those into the plan. Again, the arterials are the ones that get the most. When we say an arterial street, that's a major thoroughfare, so obviously, those get the most use, so consequently, if they need work, those are probably going to be the primary ones we, we look at there also. We're looking and trying to, you know, come up with a better comprehensive plan, you know, going forward. I know that, I can't, I wish I could address every street, but obviously, I can't.
So, just to, just to highlight where we're at. So, as Rich identified, during this particular countywide half-cent sales tax program, there was a plan specifically to address economic development as a, as a funding tool to support the growth, the economic growth of the community. There was a $5 million total, which has been allocated from the JDO to the, to Go Topeka for the purposes of conducting economic development activities. In addition to that, there were, there was an amount of money that was allocated to the county for bridges and infrastructure projects, and there was an amount of money that was allocated for the similar purposes to the city level. One of the things that, that we're asking you to weigh in on today, there's been a lot of discussion about specific issues, and quality of life issues, if I may, and there was a discussion about potentially funding some improvements at the, at the Expo Center. And there was also some discussions about funding improvements at the zoo, or at the parks. So, what's really helpful to us, as we go back and report our findings to our elected bodies, is what are people saying? What are people expressing their interest in? And from that point, we're going to take the findings of this meeting, we're going to summarize it to, to the elected body during a, a meeting next Tuesday, and then from there, I'm going to receive some direction from the city perspective, and the county will provide direction as to how they want to go through the process, to ultimately make a determination as to, A, do we want to proceed with another half-cent sales tax program for similar purposes, and if so, what does that include? Does it include some quality of life, or does it not? Does it include economic development, or does it not? Does it include road and infrastructure projects, or does it not? So, that's what's, that's why we gathered everybody here. And asked everybody here to participate in this meeting. So, I just wanted to throw that out there. Ma'am, are you here to speak?
I am.
All right.
Good evening. I'm Angela Sharp with Bartlet and West Engineers. I'm a civil engineer, and as such, most of my work has to do with site and land development type projects. And just as general comments, when we have a prospect meet with us about a, a project, about bringing their capital dollars to our community, one of the main things that they are curious about is the availability of the municipal infrastructure, and the governing body's ability to maintain that infrastructure. The current sales tax issue has brought many improvements to our city and infrastructure specifically, that would not have occurred without the sales tax being in place. And one of the great aspects of the sales tax is that about a third of the revenue generated does come from visitors and commuters that live outside the city of Topeka. So, those folks that are enjoying these improvements to our city, just like us, those of us that are proud to call Topeka home, are actually helping to pay for those. So, those benefiting are help paying. So, that's, in my experience with other communities, it's proven that the sales tax is a good way to pay for these types of improvements. And just to close, I think quality communities bring quality companies that are going to bring those capital dollars, that will increase our tax base, and bring additional jobs to all of us here in Topeka.
Thank you.
I'm Nancy Johnson with Community Resources Council, and I certainly am 100% behind this tax, have been very advocating of complete streets, believe we need safe sidewalks, good lighting, and certainly within our more vulnerable situations. But I also would like to propose that a percentage of this comes to nonprofits, because as more and more money gets less and less, we have more and more problems within our city and our county. And I would like to have the proposal looked at, that instead of those that own houses having that part of the mill levy that we argue about every single year, coming on to the houses that in fact, the entire tax base pays for this, therefore, when one of our indigents might walk in and buy a pack of cigarettes, he too, he or she too, would be paying for that half-cent sales tax. This is a very novel and interesting way to look at it, but I think it becomes all of our responsibilities, and not just landing on the city and the county. So, I would like to see a percentage of this go to a nonprofit fund that might be seriously looked down by a panel of not only city, but also county, those people that are appointed to it.
Yes, my name is Sylvester Rice, and I'm interested in the equity in what we are all here to propose and to see how it works out. The equity that I'm looking for is the administration and the economic development aspect of your program. And the reason that is so important, it produces and authorizes an improvement in the quality of life. And why that is so important, I've done a bit of research into the history of the sales tax activity, and I'm happy to report, but sad to have to report, that there's a lot of unanswered questions that must be answered before we can go forward with the development and the use, continued use of the sales tax. As an example, and a fact, can either one of you tell me, or tell the body, how the economic development distribution has benefited blacks in the city and in the county, as well as the state? That's one instance. But in support of that instance, I would more to remind you that the U.S. Constitution requires that what you do, you must do it equitably, and we all must be involved. Now, you've got an attorney sitting there, and you've got others in the audience, who have taken the oath, that I have heard them take, solemnly swearing to uphold the Constitution of the United States and of the State of Kansas. I want to challenge that from the standpoint that, I heard you take the oath, but I haven't seen you perform those duties. Therefore, if you fail to comply, there is a penalty for failing to comply, because we do live in a society where everybody that pay are entitled to a reward. Leave that open as you go through the conversations and the issues this afternoon, and this evening, and as we go forward, because it's important, and I would hope that we can volunteer. and as we go forward, because it's important, and I would hope that we can voluntarily come to an agreement about the equity of the administration of all of this and not be compelled by the rule and the force of law. Thank you.
I'm Doug Jones. I teach at Washburn University. I have a, a home restoration business in Topeka, and I'm the board president of the Jayhawk Theater. And I am very much for approval of this tax extension. I would even like to see it raised more than half a cent. I've lived in Topeka my whole life, and, and pretty much my whole life until the last probably five or 10 years, I've thought we had an inferiority complex. And I'm thrilled to see the things that are happening in our city. I think it's time to spend some more money on quality of life. We can't divide these things quite so neatly in these three categories, because quality of life projects also generate economic development. And look at the downtown revitalization project, the, and open Jayhawk Theater, I tell anybody this who will listen, would be a, a strong factor in downtown revitalization, and it would be a strong factor in economic development. There are other very worthy projects. I would like to see many of them move forward in quality of life, and of course, economic development is important, and our infrastructure is important. So, hard to separate all three. I'd vote for, I'm, I'm a person who has never complained about the money we have spent on the capital. It's magnificent. We will have people flocking here to look at it, and, and we should show them how proud we are of our city. And, and so you have my permission to raise it more than half a cent.
Jim, can I say two things? I think everybody knows this, but, but he brought up a side point that I might want to address. We're not looking to raise the sales tax. We're looking to replace an existing sales tax. So your overall tax burden won't increase from what it is today. The county levy is a half-cent sales tax, and that ends in 2016. What we're talking about is that the next tax would start in 2017, again, at the half-cent sales tax level. So I want to make sure everybody was clear about that. The other thing is, is that on a county tax, as far as the history as I can find, we've never had a quality of life measure on a sales tax ballot. I'm not saying we can't do it. I'm just saying, we've never done it at the county level. And I don't know that that would pass. We don't know. That's sort of the reason we're having these informational meetings now, to see if there's interest in that sort of thing. But we're somewhat in unexplored territory when we start talking about quality of life things on a county ballot. And I know they pass in Johnson County. I, I don't know about other places.
Okay. I appreciate those comments. The, the real purpose for this and the motivation behind this meeting and other activities that, that hopefully will take place in the future is really to get a pulse of the residents of this, of this community, both the city and the county, to make a determination as to what's important to you. Because as Rich has said, I think everybody's a little bit nervous about quality of life projects, because it's never been done before. And it really, I think we all understand that, it has to have some economic benefits. So we want to hear what people have to, to say and to think about that, that we're not just looking for another funding source for bad projects. We're looking for something that will make this community better now and well into the future going forward. Yes, sir.
My name is Michael Bradley. I am recently retired from a nonprofit in town, The Villages, continue to work almost daily out there as a volunteer, and I'm a volunteer on the, the board of the Noto Project. But, you know, I rise to, to speak in favor of increasing the breadth of this sales tax, the value of it. And I think that we have put a lot of money into economic development, and there was an attempt to kind of hijack the visioning process and make it all about economic development. The community said, "No, we want an arts district. We want an improved downtown. We want to start being proud of our community because we make things that people want to come live here because they exist." And I think that we need to, to really, I mean, you know, one of the things that's been done in the state is to look at the, the money that's given to corporations to come locate here, tax credits and all sorts of things. And there's some question about it, whether it's been useful or not. I think legislative post audit is saying, "Oh, we're not so sure." And I think that we can say that some quality of life changes have really made some communities around us, and I think are starting to make Topeka places where people actually want to come live, which is going to then attract businesses that want the best quality of people. So I think quality of life needs to be in the mix, needs to be an important factor, and the, the community, I think, is behind it. You know, we're, we're, it's time to, to fund things that not only help a small percentage of people, but help the people in the community broadly. And quality of life improvements certainly would do that. I also support, you know, the wonderful thing, positive changes that are happening with some of our infrastructure, which has needed work for a long, long time.
My name's Lonnie Williams. I happen to be the chair of the Minority Women Business Development Council here in Topeka, and I also sit on the Jayhawk Board as campaign chair. But the quality of life, I have a question to ask, if I heard you correctly, that the county and the city never did the quality of life together. My question is, and I thought the city and the county's parking wrecks came together as one, is that correct?
Yes, they merged generally once, 2012.
Okay.
I think, Lonnie, I think the, just to clarify, the statement was made by Mr. Eckert that, that we've never put one of these on a ballot.
Right, and I understand that. And with that said, I just want to support the issue of quality of life, because I think we're in the, we're in the right mode of trying to redevelop downtown, and along that lines, we need to bring our families and children back downtown. So the quality of life would be one of my votes, and I would certainly vote for the, to extend that tax.
Jim, can I ask him a question? I, I was just wondering, if you're reading a sales tax ballot question, because ultimately we're going to have to write this, if it just says quality of life on the ballot and nothing else, are you going to trust that? Would you vote in favor of that?
I don't think so. You have down here several things, the zoo, Kansas Expo Center, bike, bikeways and trails, you know? I think all of those things are quality of life. I also think the Jayhawk Theater would bring some of that to the, to the city also, because it would be a pillar downtown. It would bring families back downtown. So I'm very much interested in that.
Okay, so a detailed sales tax question, that's the way to go. That's what we've done in the past.
That would be my vote.
Jayhawk Theater, that's owned privately, correct? Who owns Jayhawk Theater?
It's a 501(c)(3). At, at the present time, the board is, and we, the board owns that theater.
Hi, I'm Brendan. I am also on the board of the Jayhawk Theater. I would advocate for that. What I'm here to talk to you about, though, is as a president of a neighborhood association and a young person, when my peers and friends look for places to live, they do not look for a job, first of all. They look for where they want to live. They look for quality of life. They look for entertainment, and they move there, and then they find a job. That is something fairly new in the last 30 years that's begun occurring, and I believe it's going to continue happening. And so in order for us to compete for those folks to come to our community and work for our corporations, we absolutely must focus on quality of life, entertainment, and that sort of thing. And I think if it takes tax money to do it, then we need to get busy and make that happen. I would ask that we put a little bit of emphasis back into neighborhoods, into some of the planning that needs to go in there. As a neighborhood association, there are only so many things we can do with volunteers. There's lots of expertise out there that would be nice to have available as part of this, and the ability to work within our own, I'll use the term borders loosely, within our own area, to try and create our own improvement in partnership with the city. I think there's huge opportunity there, and I'd like to see that as part of this. Thank you.
Jim, if he gets to call himself young, I get to call myself young.
Young at heart. But he looks young.
I don't think there's much of a difference.
I think I'm the only person left in this row yet to speak, so I thought I'd go ahead and speak.
And you're with the Jayhawk Theater.
I, I am not. I'm actually not with the theater. But to answer your question, Mr. Eckert, I do think it needs to be a specified sales tax. I think quality of life is important. As president of the Friends of the Topeka Zoo, I think the Topeka Zoo should be as part of that question. We've been, we've spent the last 18 months or so working on a master plan for the zoo, and we think it's important, it'd be good seed money to help us get that started. It's going to be like the downtown project. We certainly believe it should be a community-wide. We should go after public and private dollars, and I think this would be a good seed money to help us get that started.
Hey, takers in the back of the room?
I'm J.R. Campbell. On this list is a city sales tax survey. About halfway down, it says southwest 37th Street. Should say southeast, because that's in my area.
I'm Senator Hensley, lifelong resident of the Highland Park neighborhood. In fact, I live in the house I grew up in on Virginia. A real asset to our community on that side of town has been Dornwood Park. And I happen to be on the board of directors of the Highland Park Baseball Association and have been so almost 40 years. And so I would put in a pitch in terms of any, at least small percentage of money from the sales tax that could go to park and recreation department, which I supported the consolidation of the city and county parks, and hopefully raise some money to where we could improve Dornwood Park. We, as an association, supported the county, you know, improving the so-called SCABA complex out at 29th and Croco Road, which is one of the best, I think, in the state now, now that they've made those kind of improvements. We are a not-for-profit organization. There's also another organization out there that we hope to merge with, and that's the Dornwood Girls Softball Association. I happen to play baseball, little league baseball, in that organization, which has been in existence, the Highland Park Baseball Association, has been in existence since 1941. It's the oldest little league organization, probably in the state of Kansas, and our clientele are primarily low to moderate income kids, both on the girls' side and the boys' side. And we know that a, a goal of our city is to make sure that we help our kids. We don't want them to have, you know, time when they're not engaged in some sort of summertime activity, because they may, you know, find problems elsewhere. So I think it's very important that we look to, Dornwood Park is a real asset, and, and we not only get kids from the Highland Park area, from the east side of Topeka, but we get them pretty much from all over the county. And so I would ask the city and county elected officials who are listening here tonight to really take a look at making some improvements to Dornwood Park. We'd like to see it on the, on the level of what's happened up at the Shawnee County North Park, where we need some new fencing and, you know, new infills and that type of thing. We're not asking for artificial turf or anything like that. We just need some basic improvements so that we can continue to serve the clientele that we serve. And I know there's a great deal of concern among both boards that if we don't make those kind of capital improvements out there, that those organizations may not be able to survive, quite frankly. We may not be able to continue to do what we do. We think it's very important, and so we'd ask for your support. Thank you.
My name is Dale Cushionberry, retired educator in the city of Topeka. First of all, I appreciate this type of meeting being held. As I listen, there are a couple of things that are of concern to me. One is, I'm for the sales tax, so that's not an issue. We'll get that off the table. My concern is that we make sure that as we improve the infrastructure, we improve the quality of life, people are coming to our city, that in this development, that we take care of our local businesses as part of the contractors, make sure that these developments go through, whether it's a construction company that's local, that has the capability of doing it, and so on and so forth. Sort of pigging back on Senator Hensley's comments about the structures, Dornwood, et cetera, you know, one of the things I found out when you do surveys, the people that are going to vote will be the people west of Kansas Avenue. And so the representation of the ideas probably won't be heard from where they need to be heard. And I think it's incumbent upon the city commission, the county, to have a committee to go around and survey, to ensure that we're having equitable growth in our city, our strengths and our total existence, not in East Topeka, West Topeka, North Topeka, South Topeka, but Topeka. And the questions that have to be fundamentally asked, is it good for Topeka? Not just East Topeka, West Topeka, North Topeka, South. So my concerns as a former principal is the fact that some areas have covered bus stops for the students, but on the east side, you don't have that. I guess, again, my issues are issues of equity. I think we have some great things going. Topeka's a great place, but we have to ensure that the development east of Kansas Avenue is encouraged as well. And I say that from the standpoint, like your body, you know, you wouldn't want one arm growing and your other arm not growing. You would be considered a freak or an aberration. When you see a city that's experiencing social and economic disorganization decay on one side and more growth on another, it's a freak or an aberration, and people take note of that. Thank you.
Body, Joseph Ledbetter. First place, I highly commend this type of process. This is what I would have envisioned 10, 12 years ago, when we were having these discussions, is to not just do it in some closed room or some back cloakroom, but actually engage the public and, and have town meetings. And I would recommend that if we're going to do this, that we have several more of these town meetings, so we can really vet out the ideas, because I'm a big proponent in reading it and understanding it before you vote on it. And I think the national level shows that you need to read things before you vote on them, and you need to vet them. I also represent a NIA, and I would say that if you're going to have this kind of a tax, that you need to do a number of projects on the east side. Southeast California from 29th to 45th is certainly one with great needs. It has open ditches. It's only two lanes. It's going to generate a lot more traffic in the future. We also have in High Crest, a horrible road that a lot of people use, and I mean a lot, hundreds a day. It's called Fremont Hill, and it's from 29th to 31st, and I think it was built 50 years ago. It's fallen apart. The bridge at the bottom of the culvert is cracked and broken, and I don't think you'd see that out by want-to-maker. In fact, I know you wouldn't. In fact, I know you wouldn't. So I do share the concerns about equity. On quality of life, I'm not even sure I support a sales tax extension at this time, because I think our sales taxes are very high, especially on the poor and the middle class. However, if you were going to do quality of life, I guess something that would perk my interest would be to see the zoo moved to the county, where it's a countywide-supported zoo. If they're going to get some countywide sales tax money, why not be a county-supported zoo, like Sedgwick County in Wichita? I think it broadens port, and I think it, it makes it potentially a lot larger zoo than it could, than it would be. If you're going to do economic development, the problem I've had with the current sales tax is, that's a very vague term. And I would have just as soon seen over the last few years, some of that money would have, if it would have gone to Parks and Rec, I would have been much happier than where it went, because I could never file CORAs and find out where that money was being spent. I was not told of meetings that were happening. And really until three years ago, when I and a few others really pushed it, we didn't even get public comment at the JADO meetings, which are open to the public. And they were held in a non-public place. So we've had some serious mistakes, I believe, with the economic development component. We don't have enough transparency, we don't have enough accountability. And probably the worst thing about it is we don't have public input. We only have a few people throwing out the ideas, and everybody else is really told our ideas don't matter. And the small business people are the ones that should be the ones that are the focus of economic development. They're the only ones nationally that are creating jobs. It's not government, it's not stimulus, it's not big corporations, it's not Walmart, it's small corporations and small businesses. And if you're going to really stimulate business and business development, you've got to focus on the small business people. And that would include veterans, not just disadvantaged, but certainly them as well. But you need to do a broad spectrum of support or focus on small business if you're going to do a truly successful program. I also think that the amount that we've given, in this case, GoToPika for 12 years, is too much. I would have liked to have seen maybe $3 million, $3 million. I think that's a more manageable number. I would like to see it run under the city, where I can file a CORA, I can find out where the money went, I can go to their meetings, I can have input, I can speak. And I think those are tremendous weaknesses in the current economic development program as written. And I continue to stand on that. And if it's got economic development in it, it's got to identify a clear organization that's public, like the city of Topeka, or I won't support it, and I'll certainly try to get other people not to support it as well, because I think I am, I am not happy, and a lot of other people in this community are not happy, with the closeness of the current There's been talk of redoing the Expo Center. Like to just refresh the memory of the public, that's only a 26-year-old building. Is there something wrong? Okay. And so when I, when I see people throwing out $60 million, $65 million for the Expo Center, I'm going, why? I don't support that at all. Now, the Expo Center could sell its naming rights and probably generate quite a bit of money. Am I running out of time? Okay, I got it. I could keep talking, but I won't, I want all of you people to have inputs, so...
I'm not going to kick you out.
No, that's okay. I don't want to be rude here. I could definitely talk, I don't want to be rude. But listen, I, I hope we have more of these town meetings, because I think they're important for everybody to be involved. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? All right, I, yes.
I don't know whether it should be better to be first or last. My name is Carol Marple, I'm a citizen of Shawnee County. Maybe a frustrated teacher, I've never taught, but I did a handout. So if you'll just kind of, if you're interested and would like one, feel free to take one. I would not support nor vote for the sales tax to be continued as the way it is now. My problem is with the $60 million that we have for economic development. It's not working. I want to read something to you, and all of my information came from the Capital Journal, GoToPika's website, or GoToPika's meetings. In 2004, Doug Kinzinger, president and chief executive officer of GoToPika and the Greater Topeka Chamber of Commerce, he was talking about the sales tax that we are in now, said 50% of the $5 million would be used for direct incentives to retain and create quality jobs. Kinzinger said such funds would be used to fill empty downtown office buildings, the Menninger campus, Forbes Air Industrial Park, the unused portions of Burlington Northern and Santa Fe Railway Yards, the Kansa Business Park, and also attract new construction to Center Point Commerce Park, where the Targan Distribution Center is located, along with the Corporate Meadows and the Topeka Air Industrial Park. He said another 25% would go towards site development to acquire land and make utility improvements to provide expansion opportunities.
Can I, can I just ask that, instead of this being a critique of an individual's performance that you really...
It's not, it's not.
Okay, so I'm just going to ask, and I want to be respectful, as I'm asking you to be, just identify what you'd like to see, what you, what you wouldn't like to see, because I don't really don't want to get into a critique of GoToPika or anybody else, we just want to know...
Well, but they spend $60 million of this tax. You have to, it's not working. If you look at the jobs, and that's what, we need jobs, but this $60 million could be spent on parks. We have, our jobs are not there. If you look at this, we are in, we have lost so many jobs. We have offered money to Menningers to stay here, they were offered $100 million. It wasn't worth it for them to stay here. You know, let's take this $60 million that we have, and let's use it to improve our community. Our property taxes, everyone's went up. If we lowered our property taxes and wanted, people would want to come here. You know, we've had two restaurants close in the, in the last week.
And I really want to be respectful. Can I ask you a question then?
Sure.
Because I know where you're going. All right, I'm following you. Would you like to see the sales tax continue, and if so, what would you like to see invested in, based on the format that's been identified here today?
The sales tax has been wonderful as far as repairing our bridges, our roads, these are all things that need to be done. I think you would agree that the water system in the city needs work, a great deal of work. Okay. What would $5 million do for that? You know, it would...
Cause 42% of county voters to probably not vote in favor of the sales tax.
But, no. If the county had $5 million, what I'm saying, we need to spend our money on our community. You know, we have cut services to a lot of people that still need the services.
So you're supportive of the county's wide sales tax, you're supportive of infrastructure development, you're not supportive of economic development?
Not the way it is now, no. You must qualify that. Yes, we need economic development, but the way our money is being spent now, no.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate your comments.
You're welcome.
I think it's really important that everybody understands that, at least when I talk to my elected officials and senior staff, we don't have a, an end goal in sight right now. We're not trying to work and manipulate the system so that we get, to bring this thing forward. We're trying to really gather information so that, so that we can do...
So that we can do what's in the long-term best interest of this community. I think most people agree that the countywide half-cent sales tax up to this point has had significant value. The question that we want to know, and certainly that we want to bring to our council so that they can make the most informed decision possible, is does, do we want that effort to continue, and if so, what does it look like? This has been a very good conversation. I don't want to cut anybody else off if they want, if anybody else wants to speak, but it seems like we might be running out of energy, and, and if so, I'll set this down, we'll give it a couple of more seconds, and if nobody else speaks, we'll, we'll go ahead and wrap up. Well, we got one more.
I don't have anything real in-depth to say, but I just want to say that if we were to look at quality of life projects, I would support the bikeways, but I think that they could fall under more than just the quality of life, potentially with, I mean, their, their infrastructure and that they, they offer transportation across the city, and I think they impact a wide variety of cities, so you don't have, you don't have any equality issues across different parts of the city. I think they also offer economic development, and they offer people transportation of their jobs, and they also offer the potential for people to see their community in a different light and try out new businesses and the like. So, thank you.
All right, I'll just ask people, if they, if they're willing to do so and interested, please fill this out, and we're going to give you an opportunity to meet our zoo director, Brendan Wiley. We'll be collecting them back over the... I've heard this about, Brendan is the most loved person in the city. I'm kind of hearing a high feeling about 4% of his personality and mine. So, all right, thank you very much, everybody.